At this time, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting for July 25th, 2022. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deputy Clerk Judy, please let the roll call show that Councilmember Dilg, thank you, not off to a hot start here, is absent this evening. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Motion to excuse Councilmember Dilg.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
Sorry, who did second on that one? Who won?
Everybody.
Move on to the approval of the minutes, July 11th, 2022. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'll move the minutes. I'll support discussion.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So Judy, on the bottom of page five, the motion to approve the change orders, it didn't record Councilmember Mosher's vote.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, right?
Motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I'll support.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. We have no bills this week. Approval of the agenda. Councilmember Kibble.
I was hoping to, that we could have a discussion about attorney-client privilege. In this case, the issue is primarily with Robert's Rules of Order and where and when applied to apply client attorney privilege. Good grief.
Oh, Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'll move the agenda as amended.
Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Hold on a second.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hanson. No consent agenda this evening, so we'll move on. Did I ask if everyone was in favor of that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. No consent agenda this evening, so we'll move on to public comment. Please remember to state your name and address, and remember our two-minute time limit. Go ahead, sir. Oh, you know what? Would you mind waiting till the end? No? Okay, never mind. Go ahead.
Okay.
I got you.
My name is Ken Mahalik, 939 West Hills Drive, South Lyon, and wanted to say good evening, Mayor, City Council, and members of the audience. I'm Ken Mahalik, Chairman of the Culture Arts Commission. Tonight, the Culture Arts Commission would like to recognize a business owner who has made a great contribution to the arts in 2021. The business owner worked professionally with the Culture Arts Commission, the DDA, and its director, the city manager, to give the city and all who visit downtown a wonderful and frequently photographed mural. The contribution to public art has enhanced the aesthetics of the downtown and has promoted the city in a very positive manner. Tonight, I'd like to present, on behalf of the Culture Arts Commission, its first community art award to Susan Stowe, business owner of Grand Trunk Home. The Culture Arts Commission is forever grateful for her support, her contribution, and for her encouragement to other business owners with respect to the arts. And at last, and most importantly, the Culture Arts Commission would like to thank the city council for supporting the arts. Susan, would you like to come up?
Yes.
This is the, this is what the trophy looks like, and it's your name on there for mural art?
What a great surprise.
Thank you. I certainly didn't expect this.
And also, we have an award, and I wanted to give awards out to people that actually, it feels like a, it feels like a real award, not just a piece of paper, although a piece of paper would be good. You know, but I just think it's more special assistance coming from the Culture Arts Commission.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Ninja.
Are we doing on our four minutes?
You're good.
Thank you for your time.
Now, I want you to say a couple words, too.
All right. Well, I am going to thank the Culture Arts Committee for awarding me this because it's a total surprise to me, and I really appreciate it, and I love the mural, and I know that, you know, the city worked with me on that, too, and I appreciate it. And we can't say enough about Kevin Burdick and the work he does, and I love the mural. It makes a big impact to the downtown. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Ken, great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else for public comment this evening? All right, with that, we will close our public comment, and we'll move on to the discussion of downtown this evening with our DDA Director, Nate Mack.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. I want to first say congratulations to Grand Trunk on their award and on the mural because it's a great addition to our downtown, and Susan is very deserving of that award. So, kudos to her. Now, getting to other business of economic development in the DDA. So, for the events that are happening on Saturday, early last week, I sent out a reminder to all of our business and property owners in the downtown, making them aware of the street closures, timing of everything going on, so they have that information. Farmer's Market again this last weekend was fantastic. It was very full. There were a lot of people there. Food trucks sold out by noon, I believe, is what Diana told me, so it was another great day. Last week, staff met regarding the Lafayette Street Park, which is 390 South Lafayette, that has come before council and a number of boards and commissions, to kind of go over the plan for the development of the park, which included the phases of development, costs, and other potential funding that we could have access to, which includes additional grants that we'll be going for. Last week, I met with our Main Street Oakland County liaison to discuss our progress towards becoming an accredited Main Street program. We're getting closer. They like to see that we're going through the redevelopment-ready communities training, and I'm working on increasing organizational capacity of the DDA as well by implementing some strategies to help myself become more organized and in turn help the committees perform better. The DDA Board has met since I last gave a report to city council. The last DDA Board meeting, the board selected officers, so Derek Mashburn is the chair again, Jeff Heinonen is the vice chair, Mark Childs is the secretary, all those three have been the same, and then our treasurer is Tracy Smith, who was recently appointed to the board. And then finally, at the next meeting, Main Street Oakland County is going to present a certificate to the council and to the DDA. So, just a heads up for that. Yeah, that's it. If anybody has any questions.
All right, great. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So Nate, you've been fielding some questions from residents, business owners, and so forth regarding the clock downtown.
Yes.
So, where do we stand? What did we find?
So, currently, the clock is working. All four sides show the proper time. I spoke with Jeff Archie today about the clock, and he said that there may need to be some light bulbs replaced in there, so.
Might need to be some.
Light bulbs that need to be replaced. So, we're looking at either LED or fluorescent. To his knowledge, he doesn't know if they, if the light bulbs have been, have ever been replaced, so we'll probably go with the fluorescent to give it that kind of old-time feel, so.
Do we have any idea what, how much life is left in that clock?
I do not know the answer to that question.
How tough it's going to be to get parts as we go forward. I mean, the thing was out of service for six months plus.
About, yeah.
Okay?
Yep.
So, I'm not sure what the reason was it was out of service for that length of time, whether it was difficulty in getting the parts, difficulty in identifying someone capable of fixing it, or what the problem was. But I guess my question is, are we going to have that problem and more going forward? Do we need to look at alternatives? Do we need to look at maybe a replacement for it, maybe a different, you know, just putting a new head over on that post or something that is newer, has longer life ahead of it, or what? I don't know. I'm just.
Yeah, I mean, it's something, yeah, if we continue to have issues with the clock, that's definitely something that we're going to explore. Part of the problem of getting it fixed is just getting the availability of people to come out and work on it, as well as parts and everything that goes along with that, so.
Okay. So, who came out to fix it?
The contractor that works on the clock that we've had.
Was that Brownie Signs, or did you have somebody else?
Yes, yes, it was.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Mosher.
Excuse me. As far as the farmer's market goes, have you looked into getting the no parking sign for the south lot? I know Diana has asked you for it.
A no parking sign for the south lot?
For the south lot. Yeah, she said she had spoken to you a few weeks back. You know how they don't have parking overnight, Saturday night, so.
Oh, like a traffic control order in place?
Oh, yeah.
Is that what you're talking about? I don't remember if she asked me.
Oh, no, she talked to you about it a few weeks back. She was asking me if I'd heard anything, so.
Okay. No, I'll have to get on that as well, so.
Yeah, I talked to Jeff Archie, and are you talking about the sign that said?
Yeah.
Yes, we've, I think it's already been ordered. I talked to Jeff Archie, so we're just waiting for that sign to come in. We will post that on the south lot.
Right.
So, we already talked to Jeff Archie. It's already in motion.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, chief. Anyone else have anything for Nate tonight? Councilmember Hanson?
So, as I was walking to the farmer's market this weekend, I noticed on the appliance store, there was a stop work order permit. Any movement on that, or any updates?
They have not gotten their permit for that side where the stop work order is. They have the other side of the building, the smaller portion, which is going to be the doctor's office. They have permits for there, but they do not have for the other side. So, I checked last week. Still don't have any paperwork in for permits or anything, so once they do, I'll include it in a report.
Any updates on the bookstore? Any movement as far as new terms?
No, I don't have any information on that.
Councilmember Kibble.
The, what used to be the restaurant and then the hairdresser next to, on the east side of the theater, that's up for sale, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know what the price is?
I don't, off the top of my head.
Have you heard of anybody having an inkling of interest in?
I have not on that building, no.
Do you know who the realtor is?
I don't know who the realtor is.
All right.
I know who's selling the building, but.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I just, there's no signage that I had seen, and so I couldn't really get any flavor of what was going on with it, so. I mean, it's had an awful lot of problems simply because you've got eight feet in between the theater and that building that are just kind of gone to waste when they did the remodel and built the building that's there now. I think it's difficult for people to have that narrow of a passage to be able to make things work, but I'm hoping like crazy, somebody sees the potential, and maybe they end up modifying the building to accommodate that eight foot, so. All right, thank you. That's all I was hoping.
Anyone else have anything for Nate tonight? Thanks, Nate. Great update. Move on to the fire chief report this evening?
Good evening. Currently, we're at 606 incidents for the fiscal, or the calendar year. We've had significant increase in medicals, it seems like, in the past few weeks. Our ladder truck is still on schedule for late fall for delivery. It's down in Nebraska right now, getting the ladder put on. We had the station water softener installed. Thank you for that. Just made a huge difference in our water quality at the station, and even just like washing the trucks. There's not white spots all over the answer. The simple things, right? Then we had the two trench drains installed. They removed the small circular, installed the trench drains, so not getting overwhelmed anymore. Appreciate that. On July 20th, we had another spray park. It was perfect timing before the storm came in. It was hot out. There's a lot of kids, a lot of adults, actually, but a ton of kids. It was a good time. We're going to do at least one more, probably two, in August. The date can be determined here, so. And then as far as training, on the 13th, we had a joint training with the South Lyon Police Department, active shooter training out at Hardy Elementary. In my previous fire life, as well as this one, I've been in multiple active shooter trainings. This was the most realistic. The police were really into it. We had students here for to act as victims. It made it very lifelike. It was by far the best training I've been involved in as far as a joint training, policeman-fire, so it was a really good one. And I've got the two ordinances on the table, which I assume we'll talk about when they come up.
Anyone have anything for chief?
So, you're seeing a real change in the nature of the water? I mean, like washing is easier and things?
Yep.
Yeah.
But the sluds of your soap, I mean, it's just, you can definitely tell it's soft when they're not hard water anymore.
Yeah, that's terrific. Good deal.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Move on to the police chief report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Like Chief Thorington said, a really good active shooter training, great relationship working with Chief Thorington in the fire department. Just gets better and better all the time, so great work with you, chief. Cadet Tocarski, she finished her first week at the academy. She had her orientation and the physical agility screening, and they decided to assign her as a platoon lieutenant. So, already in a good position for leadership. Looking forward to her getting done in the, probably the middle of November, so looking forward to bringing her on. Our first responder monument memorial fund meeting, we had a meeting this past, last week. To date, we've raised $17,428 between donations and the sales of coins. You guys, I believe, have some updated scale drawings in your packet, and we're hoping to break ground in the concrete within the next couple of weeks. Hopefully, thank Gary Fagan for kind of getting involved and helping us along with this process. It's been very helpful, so we appreciate him. Motor Fest happening this weekend, along with Christmas in July, so we spoke with Jeff Archie today as far as signage, detours, and which closed streets are closed. So, look on our Facebook page. But hopefully, the weather's going to be good for that day, so we can have plenty of people coming downtown and seeing what the city's going to offer. We did interview a young lady for a cadet position. We're still looking for two, but we're looking for, she came in for a pretty good interview. She is a graduate of SAG, or Grand Valley State University of Criminal Justice, so she wants a thesis for her. Good interview. We're continuing on our background investigation, hopefully bringing her on soon, and offering a position sometime soon, because right now, we don't have any cadets as of right now. But generator issues have been fixed. Couple parts in the generator, a couple discussions with Consumers Energy. There's a gas pressure regulator, and so those things are, those things are fixed. We had two tests, and both of them kicked on within 10 to 12 seconds, so we're happy that, we believe that that's been fixed, so. We are looking for a crossing guard. One of our crossing guards, Patricia Laraway, who was for us many years. She was the gale at Pontiac Trail on 10 Mile. In the morning and afternoon, she is retired due to health reasons, so if you know of anyone looking for a crossing guard, have them get ahold of Lieutenant Baki at the police department. I was, I attended the funeral of the Detroit slain officer, Lauren Courts, last Monday. Just amazing outpouring of support for the family and the number of police officers that was there, so it was kind of a privilege to sit there and just hear about his story and just kind of, you know, just appreciate who he was. A lot of times, we don't appreciate people until after they're gone, so it was very sobering. Really kind of made you think of what's important and what really isn't that important, so it was great to, I guess, help lay him to rest, so. Just a fantastic ceremony. And for those of you that are not aware, we actually had a drive-by shooting in the South Lyon Woods Trailer Park on the early hours of July 14th. Nobody was injured. It wasn't like, it was like really loud or really a crazy event. It was in the early, early morning, so. Two shots were fired. Nobody was hurt, thank God. I can give you limited details as far as what's, what happened. The investigation was led by Christopher Cedlin, Sergeant Cedlin, along with our detective and some of our evidence technicians. We collected evidence. We performed an investigation. We executed search warrants up at Lansing PD's jurisdiction with the help of their SWAT team and their command staff, gathered some very valuable evidence, and we're waiting for some of the ballistics reports to get back from the Oakland County Crime Lab. So, we should be submitting to Oakland County Prosecutor's Office for warrants on two individuals very, very soon. So, been kind of busy, and that's where we're at. If you have any questions, be more than happy to answer questions with limited details.
Councilmember Kennedy.
So, chief, just part of the signage for the Motor Fest, does that include the reserve parking for the residents there on East Lake Street, parking down on the, on Reis between East Liberty and East Lake Street?
Yes. I talked with Deb and Doug Cook, and they're always there. Those signs will be there. Those guys are great coordinator, event coordinators, and they will be there. They sent out letters to the neighboring people in the neighborhood, letting them know about the incident, or actually the event, and yeah, they're just, they're top-notch. Yes, that will be there.
Great. The other thing is, just looking at the monument drawing here, and I realize it's still in a state of flux and so forth, it shows the walkway to the monument coming from probably the walkway along Pontiac Trail. There apparently Pontiac Trail.
Correct.
Are there plans to leave an opening in the back to go to the parking lot that's tentatively planned to be behind there, so that people could come from the parking lot to the monument?
I believe that was discussed. I can probably get final answers on that, but I know that we don't know when the, when the parking lot is going to be installed, but I think that can be put in at a later time, I'm sure.
It could. I just, I'm just looking at, you know, planning ahead so that we're not running sprinkler systems, electrical through that area to turn around later, then we got to dig something up.
That was discussed at the meeting.
Put that parking there, the sidewalk.
Yeah, the electrical and the water, the conduits, everything is, it will not be an issue.
Okay.
Because that, the parking lot was discussed at the meeting.
Good enough. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, if you could please extend to Sergeant Cedlin my appreciation for his absolutely incredible investigative skills. I think he has an incredible reputation in the community for just doing outstanding, solid work that, you know, it doesn't get overturned or anything.
Absolutely.
The man is just a very, very excellent, excellent police officer, and I'm sure many in the community, I know individuals that heard about this, and I did hear that Cedlin was doing the investigation on it through grapevines, and people are just very, very impressed with him. They always have been, so he's a solid, solid officer. Glad to have him here.
Absolutely. I'll pass it on to him.
Thank you. Next, thank you for attending the funeral service of Lauren Courts down in Detroit. I think it's important that, that officers and the general public attend these unfortunate funerals that do go on, because you're right. You see the other side. You see the individual as they played a role in their community. You see them as a father, as a brother, as a cousin, as a neighbor, and you see what your community has lost. Not just a police officer, but a very, very dignified and contributing individual to any community. I would love to have a thousand Lauren Courts police officers in our community. He was just a solid, solid, solid individual, and it's so unfortunate. But he was a human being with a life and a family, and thank you for representing the city of South Lyon. Thank you. Thank you so much, chief.
Anyone else have anything for Chief Sovick tonight? All right, thanks for the update, chief.
I'll.
We have no unfinished business this evening, so we'll move on to new business. Number one, professional service agreement for audit of the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022 financial statements.
Good evening, council. I have for you tonight a professional service agreement for our fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022 financial statements. The city of South Lyon will engage Plant Moran again this year to perform our audit for, again, the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. They will work on the financial statements. They'll assist with drafting those financial statements and the related notes. The approximate cost of the engagement will be $68,000, and this service agreement does represent a 5% increase from last year. We were told that was inflationary and pretty standard across the board for their fees. So, I have provided you a copy of the professional service agreement, and I'm asking tonight for you to approve or not approve the agreement to have Plant Moran perform our audit.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
I move to approve the professional service agreement by Plant Moran, P-L-L-C, to perform audit services for the city of South Lyon for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020.
I'll second.
That was a close one. We'll go Hanson. I knows.
My mic works better, I guess.
It booms a little bit. All right. So, we have a motion by Councilmember Kurtzwell, supported by Councilmember Hanson. Do we have any further discussion on the matter? Man, man. Okay. Deputy Clerk Piper, could you lead us in a roll call vote, please? Thank you.
Glenn Kibble?
Yes.
Steve Kennedy?
Yes.
Lori Mosher?
Yes.
Maggie Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Alex Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Dan Palchett?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
I'm back.
Yes, I knew that. I knew that. New business number two this evening, fiscal year 2021, 2022 final budget amendments. Thank you, Patricia.
I promised final, last time. So, tonight, I am presenting the final budget amendments for fiscal year 2122. As I am working on the audit schedules to close out the fiscal year, there are bills that are still coming in. They're trying to get processed, and unfortunately or fortunately, I do need to request one more budget amendment. So, I'm asking for general fund for the revenue, we need to increase $312,000, eight, I'm sorry, $312,836,000, and corresponding general fund expenditures in the amount of $103,626. I have included an explanation as to where those increases need to be placed for the general fund, and I have also provided amended department budget spreadsheets for that fiscal year 2122 budget. And so, I'm asking tonight for those to be approved or rejected, so that we can make those budget amendments for the audit.
Councilmember Kennedy?
I'll make the motion to approve the proposed fiscal year 2021, 2022 final budget amendments as contained in tonight's packet.
I'll second.
Okay. A motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Mosher. Do we have any further discussion? Deputy Clerk Piper, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Sure. Maggie Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Alex Hanson?
Yes.
Lori Mosher?
Yes.
Glenn Kibble?
Yes.
Steve Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Palchett?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. New business number three this evening, first reading for Sydney Or, City Ordinance, Chapter 46, Article 2, Fire Department Inspections and Maintenance Reports.
Good evening again. So, I'm asking to amend Section 4637. Currently, the fire hydrants privately owned are to be completed annually by April 30th. This causes hardship for some of the companies. There are flowing water in the wintertime, causing ice. Just not a comfortable time to be doing that, and it fits our inspector's schedule to move it to October 30th. So, I would ask that she would consider that. And then we'd like to add a new section for 4640. Currently, when a private company does a sprinkler inspection or a fire alarm inspection, they do a report on a triplicate form, and they mail it US mail to us. There's a delay in them writing the report, getting it in the mail, then getting it to us. If any kind of critical issues come up, there's just a delay in us responding. With iRoll or any kind of online reporting system, it'll be immediately reported to the fire inspector myself as soon as it's completed via email. We have a log. We can go in and look in iRoll, see all the reports, any kind of history, and we can immediately respond to it and act quickly, so.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I move that we approve the first reading of the proposed ordinance amending Code of Ordinance, Chapter 46, Article 2, Section 46 through 37, and adding the new Section 4640.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kibble, supported by Councilmember Kennedy. Do we have any further discussion? Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, I realize this is just the first reading. We got to have the second reading and so forth. Are you targeting that this would begin this year so that the inspections would be completed by October 1st this year, or is it actually looking at going into effect for the following year?
Correct. It would be this year.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Have you got an apparatus to get the word out to everybody so that they're, they're not going to be blindsided by this?
Yeah, a fire inspector, my hand, will take care of that.
They'll just do the rounds?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
All right, with no further discussion, Deputy Clerk. All right, with no further discussion, Deputy Clerk Piper, please lead us in a roll call vote.
Alex Hanson?
Yes.
Steve Kennedy?
Yes.
Maggie Kurzweil?
Yes.
Lori Moser?
Yes.
Glenn Kibble?
Yes.
Mary Peltjett?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Thornton, for being here for that. All right. So we added, and I just, forgive me, I just Cliff noted this, I added new business attorney-client privilege question mark for this. So, I didn't know.
Mr. Mayor, if, if Council wishes to discuss this, this was added to the agenda, so Council and the city attorney can clarify this, or not. Council can waive the, this portion of the attorney-client privilege letter and have open discussion regarding this, but it will take a vote of city council in order to do so.
Okay. Um, so I guess we'll have that roll call vote. City Attorney Hamamay, please.
I need a motion first.
I would ask that any motion be limited specifically to the letter dated July twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, regarding Roberts Rules of Order and Chairperson Authority to make motions.
Okay. Thank you for that. In any sort of direction that you feel we may need, please.
No, I, I mean, it's, it's your privilege to waive.
Okay.
Not one of you, but all of you. So if you waive this privilege, it, it's, it's up to you.
All right, fair. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So I'll make the, uh, the motion to waive the attorney-client privilege relative to the letter dated July twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, um, dealing with the, uh, Roberts Rules of Order, Chairperson Authority to make motions.
I'll support.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Kibble on the matter. Do we have any further discussion at the moment? Deputy Clerk Piper, could you please lead us another roll call vote?
Glenn Kibble?
Yes.
Lori Moser?
Yes.
Maggie Kurzweil?
Yes.
Alex Hanson?
Yes.
Steve Kennedy?
Yes.
Mary Peltjett?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Well, just, just out, out of the top of my head, the, the impetus of this was, if you remember when we were talking about the, um, the, the bond that was put towards the water tower, or the water tank. So, I was kinda curious about, um, yeah.
I'll take it.
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay, so, if I could. This, uh, this basically was, um, a procedural question that arose in the last council meeting as to whether or not the, the chair or his designee has the, um, authority to make motions and/or second, uh, when they're chairing the meeting. So, the question, uh, was passed along to the city attorney. The city attorney provided her, um, her opinion of it, finding the, uh, the allowance, uh, and the, uh, the rule within Roberts Rules that does provide that, uh, authority for gatherings of less than twelve people, I think was the number, uh, and she provided that back to us, so we are just sharing that information, uh, that there was no conflict with the, uh, the motion that was made in the previous meeting, and it was perfectly allowable under Roberts Rules for small gatherings under twelve individuals. And I guess, do we, uh, does, uh, Attorney Lisa Hamamay have anything to add further to that?
Um, I, I mean, I, are you having discussion on this, or were you just wanting to relate?
I'm just bringing up what the, the subject is about, and I don't know if there's anything that you want to provide as far as background beyond what I've provided as background.
Well, I mean, I, I will, I will add, um, I, I did receive communication from Councilwoman Kurzweil, um, citing to a different section being custom. Um, as I explained to, to Councilmember Kurzweil before the meeting, I don't believe custom, the custom provision applies because it specifically applies if there's no rule. So the, the rule says if there's no contrary provision, and I feel in interpreting Roberts Rules of Order that there is a provision that allows a chairperson to make a motion. Now, I'll say, um, Councilmember, uh, Kurzweil also provided, uh, an opinion from a parliamentarian from the municipal league, and she indicated, uh, through Councilwoman Kurzweil that she's not aware of any communities that allow their chairperson to make motions. I can tell you, I have communities where chairpersons make motions. Um, I can tell you that they do it sparingly, um, because there is some level of impartiality in, involved with the chairperson making motions, but there's nothing that prohibits it. So, the direct question that was posed to me was, can a chairperson make a motion? And the answer to that question is, yes, under Roberts Rules of Order. You want to change that? You have council rules of procedure where you can incorporate a rule, um, if you feel you don't want that rule to apply to city council, but as of right now, that is my opinion as city council's parliamentarian.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, the, the reason I objected is because I have the incredible, um, pleasure of serving in a parliamentarian unit. Um, and, uh, even though I am not a parliamentarian, I am there just to learn and understand how Roberts Rules works. And, actually, I don't know of any organization where the chair makes motions or seconds motions. And the reason, as the city attorney said, and this is where I was coming from, because I'm, I'm in this group, I've been in it for maybe four years, is that Roberts Rules is about civility in running a meeting. Roberts Rules is about impartiality, it is about neutrality of the chair. And the last thing you want to do in front of the public is to introduce bias, um, of the chair, because then you question the ability of the chair to render a fair decision. Even though the chair votes, when the chair becomes part of the meeting and starts making motions and advancing an agenda and seconding motions so that a motion can be discussed, you are now taking that chair out of that position of impartiality and neutrality, and the chair is beginning to take sides. And as a chair of a group of individuals, you would think that the chair would stay out of the debate, um, just as Roberts Rules has it, and, and only votes and conducts the meeting. That's what your chair does. And that's where you have your most success in your meetings and your most confidence that you have in the public. Um, my background has been, on boards that I have sat, on whatever, I've never seen a chair make a motion. I've never seen a chair, uh, second a motion. Uh, my experience being in the parliamentarian unit that we meet once a month, will start up again in September, they never make a motion, and they never second a motion. So, the experience that I have had led me to raising the issue about whether the chair should be making a motion or seconding a motion. And Roberts Rules does have a rule, and it's regarding custom. In some organizations, a particular practice may sometimes come to be followed as a matter of established custom, so that it is treated practically as if it were prescribed by a rule. So, so as I looked back over the weekend, I said, well, what is the custom of the practice of South Lyon City Council? So, I went back into two thousand and eight when John Doyle, great mayor, was there. Um, and went through, um, a couple of years when John was mayor. And there wasn't one instance where John Doyle made a motion, except under a very limited circumstance, where John made a motion of substance, or he never seconded a motion. The only time John made a motion was when he moved to appoint people to commissions. That's the only evidence that is in the record of chairs. So that's been the custom, that was two thousand and eight. Two thousand and nine was the same thing. John did not make motions of substance, he stayed out of that, he never seconded anything. And Harvey Widdell, I'm trying to think who was the, uh, mayor pro tem at that time, um, even when Harvey Widdell was mayor pro tem, there was never an instance where Harvey ever made a motion or seconded a motion. That's the history. And two thousand and nine, when, uh, Ted Wallace became mayor, one of the first things he did on, on his first night, on November twenty-third, uh, Ted made a motion to appoint to the Parks and Recs and the Z B A. Once again, the consistency of the custom of the practice of city council was to make, the mayor made motions to appoint, and that was it. Um, in two thousand and ten, when Erin Kupkowski was, uh, I, I believe Erin Kupkowski, I don't know if it was two thousand and ten or another year, um, she was mayor pro tem in two thousand and eleven, uh, she never made a motion, she never seconded a motion. And this goes on and on. So the only evidence that I found of mayors making motions had to do with making appointments. So that was the custom that, that I was familiar with, with respect to this council. And I think it has served this council well, it has kept the mayor out of the weeds with respect to the issues, and have allowed the council members to, uh, raise the issues through motions or, uh, seconding. Um, I did not look at, and the same thing was in two thousand and thirteen, when Wallace was mayor again, Harvey Widdell was mayor pro tem. Um, same thing, the motions to appoint were made by the mayor, there was not one instance of a chair ever seconding anything. Today, I, and then I did not look beyond that because Dan Peltjett, when he became mayor, uh, my recollection is, is he has never made a motion or seconded a motion. So he has followed that custom that the, um, council has, has, has followed, in that the chair is very restricted in making those motions. Then today, I came over and looked at the corporate minute book, and I took a look at the, uh, South Lyon Planning Commission. Well, take a guess what I found. Went back to nineteen eighty-eight, and Chairman Getz, he moved an agenda, uh, he was the chairman, but he never moved on the agenda, he didn't move on anything, um, at, at all. Uh, his motions were, were, he didn't make motions, so the, uh, Planning Commission, and I followed that through. Then, I thought it was interesting to take a look at city council when, when, as, uh, the city attorney has mentioned, smaller boards. Well, the incidences that I just cited, uh, dealt with city council with seven members. So I thought, well, maybe her rule, you know, it could apply when you had a smaller city council. So I went back to look at when city council was only five members, and I looked at the year back in nineteen eighty-nine. Um, it looks like, uh, Ted Wallace was the mayor, uh, the mayor pro tem at that time was, uh, Renwick. Never any motions made, never any seconding of motions. The only appointments that were made, uh, back in nineteen eighty-nine were made by the mayor to the Housing Commission and et cetera. Uh, then I went back to nineteen ninety-five, so I looked at nineteen ninety, as, as a sample, I looked at nineteen ninety-five, same thing. Uh, the mayor at that time, I thought it was good to get a variety of mayors, to see how each mayor sort of ran their city council, and this was Mayor Potter. I knew Mayor Potter extremely well, he filled me in on all the gossip in the town. That's why I know so much, is because Jeff Potter sat me down and told me everything. And, uh, I liked Jeff, I liked Jeff a lot. Uh, and Jeff was a good mayor, and once again, it's very consistent. Jeff did not make motions, Jeff, uh, uh, made only appointments to the board, and, uh, that was about it. And then the year two thousand, so then from nineteen ninety-five, it went to two thousand. And, uh, once again, Potter was mayor for a while. And, uh, the only time I found Potter moving was he moved a resignation of Jim Melvin from the Planning Commission, which was a little bit unusual because, um, moving on resignations appeared consistently to be made by city council. So, but other than that, I, I did not find any evidence that the practice of this council has been to permit the chair to become very involved in the, the, um, the debate of the council by making motions or seconding, and I would say that it has served this city extremely well, at least from the years that I looked at. Uh, we could, we could always, um, and that's where I was coming from, I was coming from common practice that the city had been practicing for decades. Uh, so I would, uh, argue is, why tamper with success? You, you've had very good success in these meetings being run with, with a restricted ability of the mayor, uh, making motions, and I think it just keeps that neutrality, and I think it keeps the confidence that the public has in, in how council is running. Uh, second, I did have an opportunity to speak with Coco, um, Coco. Uh, happen to know Coco, uh, personally, so I do want to disclose that. Uh, she is, uh, a member of the Lewis Sachs, um, parliamentarian unit that, that I am a member of. And she also is the parliamentarian for the Michigan Municipal League. She's also a parliamentarian for many, many municipalities in, uh, the state of Michigan. She's well-known, not only in the state, but throughout the country, for her absolute brilliance in parliamentarian procedure. Uh, she, I spoke with her at length on Friday, and, uh, she, she said, you, you've got it nailed right, Maggie. It's, it's keeping that chairperson, the person in the middle, neutral. And how do you do that? Will you keep that person out of making motions, out of seconding motions, et cetera, et cetera? Um, and, and they brought up a good point. If the chair has to make his own motion, if the chair has to second a motion, then it's pretty clear that the chair doesn't have support for anything, because that's why the chair is doing it. So if you, if you're already walking into, um, a questionable area where you have to make your own motions, or you have to second your own motions, you're already, um, losing some of the confidence that maybe, um, other members of your governing body, uh, would otherwise have in you. So, I would argue, um, I read the attorney-client letter that the city attorney, uh, issued, it was a very good letter. Uh, it was a very interesting letter, but we have a difference of opinion. And, um, I would, uh, encourage council to follow customary practice, and, like I said, don't tamper with success, amend your bylaws, and just, uh, give some restriction to, um, allowing the chairperson to intervene in the, uh, process of debate. Thank you.
I'm gonna go back to Councilmember Kibble, as long as Councilmember Hanson doesn't have anything, and then I'll come back to you, Councilmember Kennedy. Go ahead, Councilmember Kibble.
There hasn't been a, uh, ground swell of, of the, had, uh, of the chair making motions on things. Um, it, it never actually had a need to, because business was being taken care of and, um, on a, the slight, I mean, last, last meetings thing was sort of a weird circumstance to begin with, so the idea of having, um, having this just to, because nobody saw that coming, the idea that, um, you know, that wasn't on the agenda initially, so the idea of this issue being presented and people not wanting to, to, uh, dance right into it with both feet without a, a little bit better understanding of where things were going, didn't seem like a real, um, wasn't a lot of heavy lifting to understand that. Um, it, it ended up going away, but I guess the point is, the, simply because it hasn't happened on a routine basis here, doesn't mean that for it to happen will end up being the demise of, of our being able to have civil conversations and come to, to an accord on whatever the, the situation is. And the opportunity to me is more, it's more important to end up getting things right and having all the information that you possibly could have, rather than being prohibited from having the full breadth of people's understandings and, and not have that to be able to weigh in on disposing of a, uh, any issue that we might end up undertaking, so. I, and I can see this coming up in the future, where, certainly not on a very regular basis, but I can see, especially when you're dancing with, um, with Roberts, the idea of having, having this come up again seems as though it, it could happen. So, I think that we should be, um, more presenting a way for that to take place for the, the benefit of that information, than to preclude us from being able to take advantage of that. of that information than to preclude us from being able to take advantage of that. So, thank you.
Anyone else have anything? City Attorney Hamamé, go ahead.
If I can just briefly explain a couple of other things about Robert's Rules. Robert's Rules, as you know, is created for all types and sizes of assemblies. And so, generally speaking, a chairperson is not necessarily a member of the board, a voting elected member of the board, which is why there's specific rules that deal with small boards. And even in that rule, it starts by saying, if a chairman is a member, he may, and it goes on. I think that purpose of that is to compensate for the fact that the chairperson is a voting member of the board and should have all the rights and privileges of all the other members. Also wanted to add, basically, his role is a dual role, so he does have a level of impartiality as a chairperson, but he also has the right to vote and be an active member of council, which is why it is recommended that it's used sparingly, but not that it's not necessarily prohibited. Also, just wanted to point out that my opinion is shared by the attorneys in my law firm, and it's not inconsistent the way I understood the MML parliamentarian's opinion, as she acknowledged that the rule is there, but that a lot of most communities she knows don't, do not use it. So, I just wanted to make those few clarification points.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
First of all, do I have permission to address the city attorney?
Oh, yeah, then, yeah.
The question is, is why do you recommend that it be used sparingly?
Well, as I explained, he has essentially a dual role. He does have a level of impartiality involved, but he is not prohibited from making a motion.
You use it sparingly.
Right.
Because you do not want the chair to be involved in bias. That's what you don't want. You don't want the chair to, I had a great discussion with Coco on this, and no offense, but her credentials are impeccable. And I think that that is the key right there. Additionally, there is a rule in Robert's Rules that does permit exactly what the gentleman to my far left is advocating. And that is, is that then how would have Mr. Kennedy been able to argue his position? How would he have been able to bring his issue to the table? Well, Robert's Rules provides a way to do that. If a chair wants to participate and make a motion or second or engage in active debate, all the chair has to do is say, "I relinquish the chair for this item number, and another person is appointed to run that part of the meeting for that part." And then the chair can say whatever he or she wants, but at least the chair is now seen by the public as now an advocate for a position, rather than a neutral person without bias. And I think that's, that is the solution right there, and everybody uses it. If you have a heated argument and an issue, just say, "Excuse me. I'd like to relinquish the chair for this part of the meeting. Item number, appoint somebody to run that part of the agenda, and when you're done, you take your vote. The chair then goes back to running the meeting." It's pretty simple. And why are the rules there? To alleviate the bias. But number one, a great point brought up by Coco on Friday was conflict of interest. Conflict of interest. It keeps the questions out. Conflict of interest. So, I think it's a simple solution, but it's whatever council wants to do. I'm only one vote. But I'd like to present the positions on both sides of the issues, so people are well-informed.
Councilmember Kennedy, did you still have something to say?
No, I just appreciate the input from Councilmember Kurtzwell. Certainly appreciate the opinion of the city attorney. She's already laid out the path forward if it becomes something that's abused, and it's unlikely to be so, based on the input from Councilmember Kivell. There is a path to deal with it. Address the rules of order for the council's operation. Okay? So, that's the way to formally address it. Otherwise, we have two conflicting opinions, and we can go back into history one way or another, but at the end of the day, it is allowed. And if it becomes abused, we can certainly adjust that in the rules of council order, like we did as far as limiting how long we talk about things and saying things over and over and over. So, again, it's to move, the purpose of the rules is to move the discussion along, okay, in an orderly fashion. So, I think we have a path forward if it turns out to be abused going forward, and that's all that happens to mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Kivell, go ahead.
The failsafe at the end of the day is that there's still a vote at the end. So, nobody can push anybody to do something that they don't think that is appropriate. So, I think that that's where we should layer our hat.
All right. Well, I'm going to jump in. I obviously was not here two weeks ago. That led to this discussion. As Councilmember Kurtzwell has stated, I have not been a mayor to make motions or second You know, I'm an open book up here. I can't sit up here and tell you that maybe I wouldn't have had I thought that I had that power. I understand and appreciate Councilmember Kurtzwell's points. They're valid. I do try to operate in the middle up here as much as possible to try and keep things moving forward for the best interests of the city. But I'm incredibly loyal to the employees of this district in our city, and so, as far as I'm concerned, how I will operate in, going forward, in city attorney Hamamé's ruling or viewpoint on this will be on me and how I will continue to do that. That's just my, I plan on continuing operating the same way I have been. Now, the future of the board is the problem here. And so, if this is something that the council would like to take up, to have a more hardened stance on this, I would encourage you guys to pursue that. But as far as I'm concerned, this has been a very enlightening discussion point, and I'm ready to move forward if no one else has anything. Thank you very much for everyone's opinion and information on that. We'll move on to the budget this evening. Anyone got anything on the budget tonight? Okay. We'll now open the floor for our second public comment. Please remember to state your name and address. And remember, we do have a two-minute time limit.
Hi, I'm Judy Keeling, 62180 Arlington Circle, Unit 5, South Lyon, Michigan. I just have a suggestion. A couple of meetings ago, we talked about a sum of money that we could improve this city with, but it had to be used in a certain way. I went to Victoria, Canada, and I've been at the senior center quite often, and a lot of people are asking for a pickleball court. And in Victoria, they had a beautiful one, and it was being used the whole time I was there. So, it was just a suggestion. We talked about the parking lot across from the fire and police station, that little parking lot that maybe we could improve the landscaping. That might be a nice place to put a pickleball court. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll close our public comment, and we'll move on to the managers' report this evening with city manager Zellner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An upcoming meeting, we will be having our regular yearly MERS presentation. Patricia and I will be organizing that, and we'll let you know when, what that date will actually be. Update on the road improvement program. We had our second public informational meeting this last Saturday. We only had a handful of people who attended, and as a relationship for the bond issue that is going to be on the ballot a week from tomorrow. The Marjory and Pontiac Trail sidewalk installation, we held a pre-construction meeting for that, and that project should actually begin this coming week, and we expect the project will be completed the week of August 8th. Concerts in the park, we are still looking for individuals to make announcements for those concerts. We need someone specifically for this coming Friday concert. We're waiting for, we sent a letter to our contractor regarding the water tank. We're waiting for response on that, and when I get that information, I'll be forwarding that on to council. And the last item I wanted to talk about is something that I'm really excited about, something we've been working on for several months now, is that we're pleased to announce that we have secured our final act for our summer concert series, and that's for Friday, August 26th. It's going to be none other than Nashville singer-songwriter and recording artist Aida Cochran, who is also a, was also a South Lyon resident and was raised here and went to school here. She's had number-one hits on the country charts. This has been, like I said, several months in the making. I'm going to hand it to Carol in our office and Nate, and we worked hard to get this, to make this happen. Really excited about coming here. She's very excited about being able to perform in her hometown. She has never done that before. We've been speaking with her for the last several weeks. I mean, she's been traveling around the country. She just performed a week ago in Las Vegas with Donny Osmond. She was down in Panama, Panama, Florida, performing with other country music artists, and it's exciting to bring somebody of that caliber here to South Lyon. Like I said, she's never performed here. She said she's maybe played guitar in front of a group of friends years back, but she's excited about this, and we have the Oakland County Bandshell that's going to be coming also. We're going to be putting that up in McCady Park, because we're going to be expecting a lot of people. So, watch the social media accounts, websites, and information. You'll start to see all kinds of things out there for that. So, I just wanted to bring that up, and I'm really excited about that, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that any council members may have.
Councilmember Hanson, then I'll come to you, Councilmember Kurtzwell.
How are the renovations coming at Columbia Park? Are we still on track for that to be finished?
Yes, they finished the painting of the courts. Now, they just have to do the installation of the poles and the nets. Then, we're going to be doing some screening around there as well, and I look forward to that opening up for use still by sometime this fall, so.
How many courts are we actually getting?
I think there's three. There's still three courts that were there.
Excellent. Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
I will raise my hand to do Friday night.
Oh, excellent. We need some for Friday night.
Concerts in the park, I got rained out the last time, so I don't, I'll take Friday. Additionally, I had an opportunity, or I ran into and met a gentleman by the name of Edward Creedal, and I believe that he has spoken possibly with you, Paul, possibly with the mayor. Very, very nice gentleman. Very, very nice. Lot of experience in city management, and I know he's watching this tonight, or he will be watching this tomorrow, because he has an issue with the city, and he would just like it addressed. And that is the potholes over by the railroad tracks over by Peters. And, you know, I went over there today and took a look at what he was talking about, and it, you know, I just don't see where those holes are that close to the rail that it would be a problem for the city to throw some cold patch in there.
We have a specific jurisdiction that we are allowed to do something with, and we have to stay within our jurisdictions. We're not allowed to go within so many feet of the tracks. We've informed, we've contacted the railroad company, so that's just, it's unfortunate. It has to do with the liability and some other things, but we've made numerous contacts with him, and I think I probably have spoken to him or have seen the emails cross paths, so.
So, the issue isn't that the city doesn't want to do it. The issue is, is that there is a problem with railroad rights that is preventing you from doing it.
That's correct. And I'll make sure, you know, I'll talk with Jeff Archie regarding making contact with them again about trying to get that thing taken care of.
Well, is there any way that the city could enter into an agreement with the railroad where if a pothole extends five feet from a rail, so you're not getting near the rail, I get that, they don't want you near the rails, but if it's five to six or eight feet away from a rail, and it's still in that window that it's their jurisdiction or whatever, you would be allowed to go in and repair, you know, giving them maybe notice that you're going to be doing it and all, I mean, there has to be a way to solve this, because...
Yeah, the issue is that they should be taking care of it.
I agree.
Because it is, it's with hundreds of jurisdictions across the state of Michigan where those railroad tracks cross, and they have the same agreements and the same rules and regulations about what we're allowed to do, what we're not allowed to do. They have a very specific mix of what they use. It's completely different. It's not pothole patching, they're cutting things out. It's not just using some, what we use to pothole patch. But I'll see what we can do to try to expedite this, because we have been working with them and making contact with them, but sometimes it just is not, things do not move quickly when sometimes when we work with the other entities like that.
I get it. Well, thank you very much for returning this call and attempting to resolve this. I just thought I would ask, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kivell, and then I'll come to you, Councilmember Kennedy.
I just wanted to say that fence over at the water plant looks terrific. I'm really enjoying the open sense that you get as you drive through there. It seems as, you could make an argument, I suppose, on either side, but I think it's much more secure having the ability to easily look in there to see if there's any mischief makers or anything like that, so. And I think it actually presents itself in a very clean way. So, I'm really happy about that. And just my two cents worth, the whole idea with the railroad track repair, I mean, our liability would be through the roof, so we don't need to be touching any of that stuff.
Yeah, we are excited about that fencing there that's by the water tank, though. An eight-foot black fence, tall fence, instead of a six-foot fence with the barbed wire is so much more inviting. It looks so much better, and it's, you know, it's almost completed, but it looks so much better over there at that site.
Forward to the portage on being taken care of. It's just such a focal point there, right in the middle of the yard.
I can ask me if they can paint that a darker color, too, so we can get this done quickly.
But I was really surprised, too, how quickly the lawn took purchase. That was really cool. I mean, it was a matter of a week, and it was starting to green up. That was terrific. I don't know if it's something that just gives it a footing, and then you have to put different seed that'll actually have a good wear, but I thought that was really nice. Looks great.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So, just for the benefit of Mrs. Keeling, I mean, we've talked about some of these specifics, but what they're alluding to is that that pickleball court is being built over at Columbia Park, three of them right now. Okay? So, that's what Councilmember Hanson was asking for the update on. So, three of them are underway right now, and Columbia Park is just south of Ten Mile, just on the outskirts of the city here. Okay?
Go ahead.
Yep. Anyone else have anything for city manager report? All right, great. Move on to council comments this evening. We'll start with Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the past weekend, I had a busy weekend, had a couple of different events, and I wanted to bring some note to those. On Friday, I was a volunteer at the Michigan Beer Festival in Ypsilanti, and a lot of guests were in attendance there, and it was great to volunteer to help out our local brewers. I was very pleased to see that both of South Lyon's breweries were in attendance, representing the city as well as their beers, and so it was very great to see both of them in attendance, and I wanted to notate that for everyone. On Sunday, we had the farmer's market as well. It was great to see a lot of families there. I wanted to remind everyone, there are still many Saturdays coming up here where we've got great weather, and it was so great to see a lot of families, especially young kids, that are very easily appreciative of something as simple as a fresh-baked pretzel. So, it was great to see the families coming out to that, and I hope to see them next Saturday as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Kivell.
I think I'm good.
Okay.
Thanks.
Councilmember Moser?
Yeah, thank you. I would like to just remind everybody...
I would like to just remind everybody, get out and vote Tuesday. Important. We had a great farmer's market, like Alex said. A lot more coming. And I know next week, we have the Relay for Life booth that's going to be there. So, I'd like to encourage everyone to stop by and get their information this weekend coming up. Don't forget, we have Motor Fest, farmer's market, and then Christmas in July. It's going to be a packed weekend. I'd like to see everybody downtown.
Thank you, Councilmember Moser. Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank all the incredible sponsors for our 2022 Summer Concert Series in McCady Park Historical Village. That includes SafeBilt, thank you. I'd like to thank HRC, thank you. Great group of professionals and engineers. You guys are the best. CIB, thank you so much, Community Image Builders. These are great events. The community really enjoys them, and we really, really have to thank our sponsors, because they're, they're just the best. And speaking of SafeBilt, I want to thank Daryl. Daryl works for SafeBilt for his zucchini. Actually, we have the best vendors and partners that work with us in the city. Daryl works for SafeBilt. He comes here to the city. And Daryl also has a gentleman's farm, and he has had a great crop of zucchini this year. And what did he do? He thought of the employees here in the city of South Lyon and brought a basket full of zucchini in today. And I just can't think of just a nicer thing for a contractor to do. He didn't have to do it, but he shared his harvest with none other, his favorite, favorite friends over here in South Lyon. So, thank you, Daryl. What a kind, kind act you did. And don't forget this Saturday, like everybody is saying in downtown, it's going to be extremely busy with Motor Fest, everything, just everything going on. And speaking of Motor Fest, we have more sponsors for me to announce tonight. Thank you, Stone Depot, one of my favorite guys over there. Bullet Distributors, Gary, you know, can't thank you enough. South Lyon Collision, Twisted Cork Winery, Lion Homescape, and Our Creations for tonight. So, thank you so much for your sponsorships, and I'll see everybody this Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, just to recap the events for the best week of this summer, we have Gemini performing family-oriented songs at the Concert in the Park on Friday from 7:00 until 8:30. That'll be followed by the movie Sing Two in McCady Park, starting at dusk, with snacks and refreshments. The next day is the farmer's market from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. The all-day classic car show, Motor Fest, takes place downtown from 11:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. And Magic Bus will be performing during Motor Fest, starting at 12:00 noon to 1:30, and then again at 2:30 until 4:00 p.m. Also, I'd like to remind everybody that Furry Friends Rescue will be at the farmer's market on this Saturday, collecting returnable bottles and cans to help fund their efforts. So, I would encourage everyone to remember to drop by, drop off your bags of returnables to help this organization as they work to find permanent loving homes for pets. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. I have a couple of things this evening. I want to thank everyone for helping pick up the dead weight from a couple of weeks here with me being out of commission. So, Mayor Tim, Councilmember Kennedy, thank you for filling in. To the staff at City Hall, thank you. The world does not stop moving when you do. So, I do appreciate that, and I, I definitely appreciate it just knowing that I could just worry about getting better. So, big weekend this weekend. Everyone's kind of hit on that. That's great. We're rooting for good weather. And, you know, I, I was not here, obviously, a couple of weeks ago. In the community lost a couple of, of great folks. Bill Drumgouski, who did the football games with Ted for a long, long time. A great dude. Cuss like a sailor on the golf course, just a good dude, though. And then condolences to former Councilmember Walton and the loss of her father as well. So, you know, obviously, the city's thinking about those, those guys. So, with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn this evening. Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a great night, everyone.